Oh, City of Kingsbury. This is your city commission meeting.
It's your drink.
All right, we'll go ahead and start with our pledges to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we have a roll call. Commissioner Ignatius.
I'm here.
Mayor Nolan.
I'm here.
And absent is, at least, maybe Allison will get here.
But we have a quorum, right?
We do have a quorum. All right. Under announcements, I have a couple of things. We're on the last couple of weeks of our budget. I did get the cover sheet and the budget posted up on the website, so we've got a couple more weeks left in our fiscal year 2324, so we're still working on that one. In fact, here's a check report. And I found out why that one website was so much, that one, because it included, it's not really the website space that is, or the plan, it's the emails. And we had included a waste manager, and I also included an attorney, but Sam, we typically use your law firm. So that's what kind of put it over, that's why it was so much higher. I went ahead and deleted those two and had all the emails sent to Mayor, so we didn't lose anything, but they're not used, so we're not sending anything.
Oh, yeah.
But that's why that particular one was so much higher.
Thank you for checking.
And I think I got everything categorized on here as to what it is. We have a number of websites, but the domain is not that much. We have kingsbury texas dot org, which is what we use. We have kingsbury texas dot com, but that just redirects to dot org. And we have kingsbury tx dot org, which redirects to Kingsbury Texas. So you can type any of those in and it'll take you to the same place. Kingsbury tx dot com, someone else grabbed it and probably waiting for us to make an offer. Usually that is typically a bit expensive, but, excuse me, I want to grab some glasses. So that's, my broken glasses. Okay. There is the thing for smart guard, and that was for the home inspection. And so we got the latest on the sales tax for $3,067.74 with interest and Texas class accounts. That puts it as $221,330.64. So.
Do you have another?
Yes, any of those. So I've got that, the new budget posted on the website. And one thing that I had gotten a couple of questions about, and I checked on that today with Lisa Hayes at the elections office, there was a number of people who have asked me about early voting in Kingsbury. There is no early voting on this whole side of the county. Everything, nothing from Seguin East. And so I, there's Marion, New Berlin, New Braunfels, Shirts, Ciblo, Seguin. And so I emailed Lisa Hayes with the Grand County Elections Office today to see about, it sure it's too late for the November election cycle, but if we can get something in the works for next month, I would like to have early voting closer to home, so. I typically vote day of because it's here. If early voting was here, I might, you know, do that, but I just vote day of mostly because I can vote in Kingsbury, so.
I was disappointed about that, too, but I read the newspaper, but I just wrote it off to, the rest of the population is denser.
Yeah, certainly, but this whole half of the county here has, there is no polling place on this whole half of the county.
Yes.
So, early vote, early vote. So I just wanted to see about getting that conversation started and see if that's something that we can do. So that's on the agenda, that's on the agenda. Any other announcements, anybody? Item number two, public comments or discussion?
I guess we could mention the Seguin Fall Festival.
Apparently, yes, for the, there is, this is the first year of apparently the Seguin Fall Festival, which is October 18th. This is Fire Chief David Larson just let us know this. It is a fundraiser?
I think he was saying that.
It worries me, but no worries, because I don't have worries. But this sounds very similar, too, because of the other things that are taking place, including having a county person hired, is in this fire station sometimes, even though this is a volunteer, but it's a paid employee that comes here. And when you call it under emergency management, whatever you call this to me, and I'm sorry, this is a far step for some people to recognize, school consolidation brought on by the state government, federal government.
Well, I think this is just a festival, just to raise money for.
But that's how we're headed in that direction. Each little thing just adds to it more.
You're worried about E S D, about an emergency?
Well, we have an emergency management in the county now, and like I said, there's a paid fire person who will work out of the different volunteer fire departments, and you come under.
Well, I think this is just.
The bigger power grab, and you mentioned, I'm sorry.
We don't know anything about it, other than it's the 18th, it's for volunteer fire departments.
It's Seguin!
And it's in downtown, in the square, I guess.
It's a nice place, very much, but they have four years, and so that is the concern.
Trying to creep in on our fire department?
Just like in what Kingsbury City exists, in every aspect of a power.
Any other public comments?
Sorry.
All right, because you were on the agenda, so we're.
Right, sure.
All right, item number three, review of public documents. This is area residents, city help with ETJ. I did submit several, and it looks like they're all on the agenda for tomorrow. I had it in my head that Seguin City Council was on second and fourth, but it's actually the first and third Tuesday of the month. So it includes Allison and.
And the aerodrome.
The aerodrome, there's several properties there and some other properties that I had submitted before Labor Day, but their next meeting was the day after Labor Day, so it didn't, was not time for that particular agenda, so.
Okay.
And I have some more to submit that I should be submitting this week.
Okay, so that'll be, wait, that'll be tomorrow?
Tomorrow. They are on the agenda for a release from the ETJ, on the Seguin City Council agenda tomorrow.
Right on.
Right on. And like I said, I have some more that I should be submitting this week.
I would love to hear y'all's story on how you have been working on these things.
Oh, yeah. It's a long story. Item number four, old business consent agenda item, this is the approval of the August 19th, 2024 regular commission meeting minutes. Is there anything on the consent agenda, which is just the minutes, that needs to be moved to the regular agenda?
I don't think so.
All right. Okay, item number five, discussing and consider Kingsbury Development Committee report. And we have, I think she probably had posted it to the.
I saw in my email she sent the, I shouldn't try to use this computer for anything that's stupid, but she sent minutes to, I saw it in my email today, but I kind of thought she was going to be here, too, so.
Well, I don't want to put words there.
Nor do I.
Okay.
Please, please.
We were there.
We have our mission, we have our mission, we have.
Yes.
Points that we need to consider.
Yes.
And questions we need to ask.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to.
But it's still, it's on, the last meeting was videoed, right? It's archived?
Yeah, I believe it is, it is.
The last.
Yes, there was, the microphone wasn't working right at the beginning of the meeting, so the first, like, 15 minutes, there's no sound, and then I saw that Tyler was actually commenting, like, here it is. So. Well, yeah, I wish I had noticed it sooner, and then I.
Mostly that was just Elena talking, right? Just kidding, Elena.
Yeah, so anyway, after, I had this microphone attached to this and I pulled it out.
We do have some, most of it.
Have you done, have you checked? It was basically that presentation at the beginning, and then once the public talking was happening, all of that is there.
That's good, yeah, I need to go over that again, I know it was here, but I need to look at it again.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll move on past that. Discussing and consider, item number six, discuss and consider, discuss and approve award to selected grant management firm for grant pre-application, application and implementation service for the City of Kingsbury 2025-2026 Texas Community Development Grant Program as administered by the Texas Department of the VAC. If applicable, Kingsbury's designated representative is authorized to negotiate and agree to a final fee on the application. This is.
Jessica's.
Okay, well, so this is the grant that is about water and wastewater improvements is the main focus of what we could do with it. We have a representative from Grant Works here right now. Is it okay to say we only had Grant Works apply for this?
I was going to ask, any applications, just the one?
Yeah, just the one.
Okay.
And so.
I believe at one point there was a call from someone asking questions, but they did not call back, so.
Yeah, I got a couple of emails, I exchanged a few emails with a man who was interested in applying. Oh, there's Elena. And so I really thought he was going to apply, and then the day before applications were due, I emailed him and said, like, hey, just wondering, am I going to see anything from you? And I never heard from him again, so.
Okay.
That's the story of that guy.
Yeah, I mean, if it was serious enough, they would have called back or anything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we did have, you know, other questions from other potential applicants, but not enough interest there to follow up, I guess.
I do have a question real, how many of the emails did y'all send out? Did y'all send out very many emails for RFPs, like five or 10 or something like that?
I believe I sent about 10.
You're hitting most of the ones, probably, that do it stays. Well, I'll let y'all vote on this. I'm kind of in a hurry, not because I'm getting delivered furniture to my son who moved back from the Czech Republic, so I'm really excited about that. He's over in Austin.
Yeah.
But I will say that our company is the number one company in Texas, and we win more grants. We want us to win grants because we're writing the grants for y'all. We win the most money, and we make the least mistakes. It's one of the reasons that I went to work for the company, because when I managed the grants, we always wanted a Grant Works grant for the community because we knew they did it right. So ready for y'all's vote, and I will be seeing y'all a lot.
And, yeah, and Jessica did follow up with some of the cities that you had mentioned in your documentation here, and there were, at least I know the one from Blanket was, that was the one kind of similar.
Yeah.
You know, to what we were looking at, and so.
Yeah, she was, she was very, she liked networks, they liked working with y'all.
We, you know, there's always personal differences when you're working with several hundred people, but the reason we've won for 30 or plus years in a row is because we did a good job, and nobody offers what we offer.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Grant Works as our grant management firm. And there's no one here to second, is there?
Yeah.
I guess you could.
I'm part of the quorum.
Well, it's up to you.
Should we talk to, I mean, we are the selection committee here. Elena, did you want to say anything? I know you read the proposal, and I'm just checking.
I believe I sent the scoring sheet back.
Yeah, I just saw it a minute ago during this meeting.
I was just waiting late today, and work's been a little long, so.
Yeah.
But no, I had nothing additional to say at this time.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you.
Okay, great, you don't want to do it? Well, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion on, did you have a resolution, or we're just going to?
Oh, should I read? I have it here.
Sam, do you have any thoughts or want to talk about it, or?
I did send you that resolution, but it took me a while.
I'm having trouble right now with my computer. I've gone through the proposal from Grant Works, but I couldn't even pull up and copy the resolution.
Okay.
Did you happen to print it, or?
I have a printed copy right here.
Can I just scan it? Because I noted that I was looking for a standard contract or something in your proposal. I didn't see.
It's the way the new system for doing grants in Texas through TBA and GLO may adopt some, something similar, is that they can break it into two parts. The first part is we help you become eligible, and then they look at all of the eligible communities, and then we fill out a full application for this, this sewer line is going to run here, this water line, we do all of that, and that's the step two. And that's when you're going to end up having big contracts. For us, you negotiate with us, and there is a standard contract for the front part, too.
And I did notice you have the prices, the cost of your services is set for the proposal. It's 9.06% or?
And to tell you the truth, I haven't got, I didn't do that part of it. Our company has people that all they do is write grants.
Well, 9.06 is above $500,000, so up to and including $500,000 is $45,000 for you.
The first, the first amount they gave you that was a base amount should have been the same percentage based on the 500 or 350 or whatever it was based on.
Yeah, I did notice it seemed like it was 9.06% of 500 grants.
And if it goes up to 750, which we hope y'all get 750,000, but I will tell y'all real quick on this region, I think y'all have a good chance to win it, which is maybe unusual for your first time to apply, but you get more points because y'all haven't ever gotten it, so you're at the top on that part. The other thing, and we were talking about this a little bit, the communities are doing so well financially right now, and there was so much money that has been spent the last few years, that a lot of the counties are not even applying for whatever reason. They don't have a low moderate income area for them to work with, and some cities have done, have grown so much, and they have so much money. La Vernea is doing really well, and they haven't gotten a grant in a while. If they apply, they might win it, but they don't really have an area that they want to address right now, so it's.
Well, Kingsbury doesn't have an ad for armed property tax, so it's not like we have, we rely solely, or not, or mostly, on sales tax. And we have, you know, very little, we get about $3,000 a month.
On your, on your population, I haven't looked at y'all. I haven't memorized everybody's populations, I have like 60 communities in the Alamo area. What is y'all's population?
That's a good question.
Depends on.
Depending on your motives, it could be anywhere from 130 to 793 or something like that.
Where they try to get the lines drawn.
Well, not necessarily that, it's that it's, when we incorporated, we needed a particular minimum number.
Right.
And so we got that, and, well, we know we at least got that, and then we've had some annexations since then, and so it's, it's.
That is going to impact.
I believe it's somewhere closer to 500.
That's going to impact your percentage and your grant, your match. It's either going to be 2% or 5%. And, you know, getting, getting 750,000 is a good thing, but 5% is like, what is that, 37,000?
Yeah, I don't know.
30.
I don't know about all of that.
Anyway, that's, we will talk about that, I will be here, if y'all ever want me to come to a meeting, I can come. If you're doing most of the paperwork on it, or you, whoever's handling the daily canvas there.
We're spreading the fun.
I had a couple of questions, just to try them quick, I know you've got to run, but when I was looking at the proposal, one of the real important part of all of this is the engineers, and I know that you, as your proposal says, you have engineers, and of course, we're not going to get into a conflict of interest where each year.
Yes, we do not, we have environmental engineering, and grants, I used to do grants like this by myself, and I would never dream of doing it now because you need a specialist. We have an environmental science department that will go over engineers' plans and try to make sure everything matches what the state and feds want. Then we have labor relations specialists, which the two things that the feds try to catch you on is environmental stuff and not following all the union laws. Even though we're not a union state, we still have to follow union laws because of being a federal, federal mandate.
Well, can you refer us to?
What we will do is, we have engineers that we work with that we know are good, and what we will do is we will pass on to them, when you do your RFQs for engineering, we'll say, y'all need to send your in, we're really not supposed to tell you because of, like we were talking about, conflict, but we will make sure that there's some good ones that do participate, and we will maybe send you to some communities that have worked with different engineers, and they can tell you how it worked out. That's better than us.
The other question I had is that it appears to be, I know we've got it in deadline, I think you mentioned December 1st, CB, CB grants coming up, and so we've got to do some, once we make the proposal and we work it out with you, we're going to have to have engineering done.
The engineering is probably going to be something that's done fairly quickly, it would be the next part of it, is getting your RFQs for engineers, and like I said, we will talk to people, say, hey, they're going to, they're a new, new city here, they need help, they've got some. What I would like to do before we even get into it, is now that you've hired us, we can talk to y'all, and y'all may have a water project already lined up, y'all think this may be good. But what we try to do is make sure that you maximize the money that's possible for you to get. You may think a water line right here is good, and we may say, this water line right here will be something that will be more effective for long term, and it's going to serve more people that, for low moderate income, and it'll score higher. The first thing you want to do is win the grant. You want, I mean, if you don't win it, granted, it's kind of like, like running for election, you can say whatever you want, if you don't win, it doesn't help you.
The other short timeframe that we have is to do a population analysis of the economic base. Do you anticipate that's going to be a problem, and are you going to be helping us do that?
There's, well, there's kind of two parts to that. First thing would be talking about the project because on this thing, you're looking at a specific area. If this water line goes out one direction, it only serves those people. So the only people that you really need to go door to door and count are the ones on this. Directly, but we could go out and say, you know, we thought that was really good, but after we knocked on doors, they actually have higher income than what is allowed. You need to have the low moderate income score for sure is 51%, 50% plus one, it's like votes. So we've got to find an area that needs the service, because you don't want to spend match on something, but you also want to spend money on something that's going to last a long time. I mean, this is a grant that you could get maybe every six years or something, maybe every eight years. But if you get it, say, we're doing this water line, and it really needs to be done, and we don't have to worry about that water line for 30 years. Then you say, well, in eight years, we're going to try to do this one. We try to get people planning ahead and also looking at what else is involved in their community that they want to have plans with. One of the things that this Alamo area did not score high on was roads. They did not put roads in there, top 1%. Now, if you get money and do a road, you have to build a new road. It's not just going out and putting all the top on everything, you actually have to build it. The good thing is that you go and build one road, and it's going to take up $750,000 pretty quick, but you may not ever have to worry about maintenance on that road like you're having to take care of all your other stuff. And still learn about your city, y'all may still have some, they're taken care of by the county. I'm not sure how this is all, I am so interested in how y'all run things, I mean, what's going on, so I will be back a lot.
Thank you. It's Tim.
Alamo area, yes, Tim, did I give you my card? And that's my, I've never written on there, so.
Well, can I ask something?
Sure.
So we don't have a municipal water service, it's serviced by a special utility district, or private water. Right, so we, so we've been talking a lot about having like an emergency well for the community, because there was a lot of trouble during like the ice storm and stuff.
You know, when it comes to things like that, that's, that's not something that I have ever dealt with, is an emergency water well, but if it's not covered by this, it may be covered under some emergency funds.
There's.
Well, there's, and there's some things that you can use once you. Well, there's, and there's some things that, that you can use once you've actually, did y'all have flooding here?
No, we don't typically. We have some low water crossing.
This, this, this area is known for flooding, whether, I mean, but some cities flood more than others. Like Welder has flooding and.
Yeah, no, Kingsbury is the highest point between Houston and San Antonio.
I did not know that.
If you're, if you have any relatives or friends that worked for the railroad, that's, you learn that. Yeah, they could get to Kingsbury and then coast either way. Yeah.
Wow, that's cool.
So yeah, we don't have much flooding.
Alamo area is, there's different regions that are covered by what they call council governments. And this is in the Alamo area. And it has all, it has counties from Vandera to Guadalupe.
Okay, but Welder is not.
Welder is in the Golden Crescent with Gonzales.
Gonzales County, next county over.
Yeah, I've been working with it. I've also worked with Victoria, Golden Crescent.
Yeah, you said Victoria.
Thanks.
Carmel is Austin, not San Antonio, here.
Well, it does make me wonder though, if this grant can't cover the emergency well, what are we going to use it for?
Have you reviewed that?
Yes.
Satisfaction?
It looks good, fine.
No comment?
Okay.
Sorry, I'm late. No, we have, well, we, no, we made motion in seconds to.
I was waiting here for you.
Okay, what now? You want to read this?
Well.
Okay, City of Kingsbury Resolution Number R 202403. A resolution of Kingsbury, Texas authorizing the award of administrative slash project delivery services provider contracts for the 2025-2026 Texas Community Development Block Grant Fund Project. Whereas the 2025-2026 Texas Community Development Fund Program contract requires implementation by professionals experienced in completion of federally funded administrative services. Whereas in order to identify qualified and responsive providers of, for these services, a request for proposal process for construction services has been completed in accordance with Texas CDBG requirements. Whereas the proposals received by the due date have been reviewed to determine the most qualified and responsive providers for the professional service. Now therefore, it is resolved by the City Commission of the City of Kingsbury, Texas as follows. The Grant Works is selected to provide Texas TXC DBG application and project-related administration slash project delivery services for the 2025-2026 Community Development Fund Project. Two, that any and all contracts or commitments made with the above named service provider are dependent on the successful negotiation of a contract with the service provider. Passed, approved and adopted. Oh, this says the 15th of September, but today's the 16th. That's what it says.
So it's just, it's not identifying what the subject of the grant. Monies would be, it's just identifying Grant Works as the administrator, yeah, of.
Of this particular grant.
Yes. So they're the only ones that replied to our.
So Frank?
I have a question. Just, I mean, does this mean that we, we can still work with other grant people for other grants if we wanted to? Okay.
Yeah.
Why not?
He's a, and I'm looking at that 127 page.
This is, this is just for that one RFP that we put out.
They got a lot of people and like he said, they've been around 45 years. They're probably the biggest around, most of the consultants, the grant consultants that I've dealt with over the years are small partnerships or sole proprietors. They're the biggest and so they're, they appear to be very competent, experienced. And he had the right answer for the questions. He, he will help us look for the other vendors and the engineers. The grants consultants I think are like, and you can see it from the two meetings we've had with their people. I think they're very much like lawyers, engineers and other professionals. They have a lot of iron, fires in the iron, iron fire. And they're busy all the time. It's hard to pin them down. But they appear to be very communicative. They, they send out their package. So it seems like it's a, all we're doing is making a commitment to retain them as a professional. And we can use others for other projects if we need to. But they, they, like the other consultants, have inroads with the people at the Department of Commerce. And so for that reason, I think we probably should go ahead and proceed with them. As I questioned him, I, I have serious questions about whether it's feasible to do this big grant for the CDB block grant because of that December 1 deadline. Because the way I understand it, when that application is submitted on the first, it's got engineering drawings. It's got a complete plan. And I don't know whether we could, first of all, the commission has to commit to a model project, whichever you want to do. So we got to do that. Then we got to get engineers and we've got to have all that grown up. And then Tina will help us write the application. And so I have questions whether that's feasible to do. And you, I think that we should keep in mind that we have a lot of points, potential points. And we'd be highly rated on the submission because we've never filed an application. But at the same time, you don't want to blow that opportunity by filing an application on December 1. It's half assed, put together.
Right. So all we're doing here is just.
And then you go into the bin for the next one.
Yeah, and I talked about that, yeah.
I do have a comment on that, which is that my understanding is that the December 1 application is the phase one application.
Oh.
Phase two includes specific project identified surveys of applicable engineering budget maps. So I don't, this is something they gave me a while back and it doesn't have specific dates on it.
It's not going to happen here that fast.
But it's, I mean, like at least from the R-Town grant, it was July was the first phase. August was the second phase, so I don't think they spread it out that much. The other thing is that if we get the R-Town grant, that is to pay for us to do an open call of planners specifically. So, you know, I mean, maybe the next, the following December would be more ideal for that particular grant. But I mean, they're, they're not just looking at that particular grant. I mean, they'd like to write that one for us because they know it, but couldn't they conceivably write any grant for us? Like a USDA grant or a?
Yes, but unless they, unless they propose to write a grant application to the Department of Commerce in Austin, we, since we do the resolution and you retain these people, I don't know that you could switch horses in the middle of the stream and go to another consultant for going to the CDB. But you could go to like the Water Development Project, I mean, yeah, Water Development.
I was talking about switching from Grant Works.
Tyler has been talking to, and we've talked about the Water Development Board. These people may be able to help us or we could get a different grant person. But with all of that said, I also think though that the second grant, I think it's 250,000 or up to 250,000 for just planning, I think that's something that we should definitely try, strive for. Because that's the one that's going to give us topographical surveys. And it'll have a long-term reach of what drainage is going to look like and streets. And so that's, we need to start there because that's going to be the linchpin to many other grants.
And it also ties into the strategic plan, you know, too. I mean, I think it's tied into our development plan. I mean, we, we're making that too, so it makes sense.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I won't, you know, it, it might be too fast for this grant and, and that's.
Well, if, if we have until February 2 for the H2 application, and that's a if, because I don't know that you can. But I remember something when you brought that up. I have a recollection that that phase two is like January, February 2 or something. And that's probably feasible. I just didn't think that you could have engineering by December 1. But we could probably have, if we make a decision about what projects the commission wants to undertake, that we could go right into the engineering and we'll be ready in February. And that's probably about the time that Tyler and I will be recommending to you and submit the first round of information. Phase one on Water Development Board is going to come like February or March. So it's, I, I stand corrected. I think it's feasible as we, to try to get both of these grants if we have a project that is solid, worked out and agreed upon.
So what we're doing tonight is just awarding the RFP to Grant Works.
And this particular grant.
Right. Any further, yeah, for this particular grant, for the grant we put the RFP. Any further discussion on that?
I guess one thing that comes to mind for me in that conversation, what you were just saying is that, you know, if, my understanding is if we apply for this grant now, you know, the less you've applied for it, the more likely you are to get it. We've talked about that. So if we enter into, if we apply for phase one, and then we, at that point are like, oh, we actually don't think this fits our, you know, if we have not fully identified the project before we apply for phase one, then we've hurt ourselves.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we don't apply before we have a fully formed plan in mind so that we don't hurt ourselves and give up that initial good chance. So, yeah, we can use that, I swear. So again, yeah, all we're doing right now is just giving approval for Grant Works. Yeah, we're not, we're not.
We're not committing to complying with the grant.
We're not.
We don't have a solid.
We're just awarding the RFP to Grant Works. Any further discussion?
I think I'm done.
No, that's good. I mean, we need to make sure we know, you know, what we're, because this is really kind of a, a first foray into this. We want to do it right. And so, yeah, we, we need to know what we're, what we're voting or yea or nay on. All right, so Frank has made the motion. I have seconded to award the, this RFP to Grant Works. Any further discussions? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So that motion counts. And then since Elaine is here, we will return to item number five. Discuss and consider the Kingsbury Development Committee report. If there, if, if you had anything to, to report.
Good evening. I apologize for being late this morning, but thank you for being flexible. The Kingsbury Development Committee met last week and we discussed the strategic plan proposal that was brought up a few months ago. The request was to find, to, to have the documents available online. And so they have been posted up on the Kingsbury Bulletin Board as well as shared Google Docs to all attendees by email link out with those links to those docs to, for people to input their information or edits and suggestions, thoughts, et cetera. That strategic, again, just a brief reminder that the strategic plan was based upon the Texas, the office of the state Texas Demographers Office and the presentation materials received May of this year. And particularly it's the demographic, the state office has predicted that nearly up to 300,000 people move into Guadalupe County by 2060. And the question is out there for the city to how will the City of Kingsbury respond and prepare for such growth? In addition, those. In addition, those goals and action work plans draft was provided. I believe I sent all of this information in the meeting minutes that I'm verbally reporting out to Evan also. I can see that I have a typo over here. I misordered goal four and goal three, so please disregard my typo. But the information is still the same. In addition, the committee discussed National Night Out and the coming October 1st and also the Fall Harvest Festival coming up November 9th. Looks like we have a number of volunteers, including many neighbors to come out for National Night Out. And the idea of maybe bringing goodies to share to contribute to the pizza and whatnot. And that's, that's traditionally provided by the city. So right now, there is no new business. We continue looking at the strategic plan proposal to try and get more community input. The purpose is to align city goals, work plans and establish a city vision and mission statements. That is the goal of the strategic plan. Couple of announcements, something that occurred during the week while we were meeting last week. Sid Miller, the Commissioner of Texas Department of Agriculture, released a statement saying Texas is out of water. And so I thought it was pretty interesting. I did a little bit more research. And I found that there is actually an opinion piece called Water for Texans by Texans, The Path to Self Reliance. And I thought that was a very good piece to have to share for everyone. So that link is in the meeting minutes. And it talks about the fact, and it also, when you go to that link, it also shows you the link of the existing water reservoirs across the state and their current levels and projected levels. I think this is an important valuable factor when we look at the strategic plan for sure and our environment and conservation and stewardship. And with the need of the community already knowing that water is something's needed. So please, if you have the opportunity, do check, take that out. I just a quick reminder, as of September 15th through October 15th, it's National Hispanic Heritage Month. And also there is an interesting Zoom presentation, online presentation from the Friends of the Texas Historical Commission. They will be presenting, we've been working on the railroad and it's talking about the railroads across the entire state of Texas. So I thought that was an interesting piece and something that gives a little history and, and some just extra, extra, extra neat things that are happening, going on in May. It's something the city may want to contribute with our Texas Historical Commission. Lastly, the next meeting is scheduled for 15th of October, 2024. It will be held at this beautiful multi-use facility, which is the Kingsbury Volunteer Fire Department, starting at 6:30 Central Standard Time. Should you have any questions, comments?
Question, Google Docs, you posted that today or?
No, sir. The Google Doc was posted onto the Bulletin Board on September 11th. So the day after our meeting. And then the email was sent directly to all, all attendees, which within the meeting report, you see the, to all the attendees. And it went a direct email to all of those attendees as well.
Okay, thank you. And have you made any prior motions, movements towards citizens input, president, increases?
That is the purpose of our online docs, to get that, to get that going. So the Bulletin Board or the online doc email, all of that is, that's where that information goes.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I have not uploaded any mission statement or anything yet because we've been nonstop working, but.
That, thank you. That was a good point. There was also, I also shared the potential, a simple draft of a vision and mission statement as well in those Google Docs as well.
Thank you very much.
And that's again, with the request, with the goal of trying to meet those, those expectations. expectations or the city goals for future and immediate planning.
Pete, I have a.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt, but do, do you have, we had talked about, and I would like to submit for consideration by the Kingsbury Development Committee, some kind of a proposed, some talking points on a subdivision, land use, and zoning plan long-term for the city. Do we, do we have access to, and my specific question is, when we first started in 2015, Nelda, the city clerk, had said, we pulled down ordinances and resolutions from, I think it was TML. And, but my specific question is, do we have access to the ordinances that Staples has done so far, so that we can have a model to start working on?
Yeah, we do have that.
I would assume that those are available online with Staples' website.
Website.
They are. That was their first ordinance.
Okay.
It's 96 pages.
And it's the first ordinance of Staples? Oh, okay. Well, then I'll check it out.
One of the things that the strategic plan will also address is, in essence, what will eventually become planning and zoning, or SOPLAT, and we figure out, and that's going to tie into both whether or not the city wishes to pursue economic development, growth, and then how, how that is, that incoming population into the county, how is that going to impact, and how is, that's going to be part of the prepared, part of the prepared response that the city needs to, needs to have. So that is included and wrapped into the strategic plan.
All right, we'll start working on that.
Subject, any comments, questions, or concerns? That's all I have.
Right?
Testing.
Item, all right, any further discussion? All right, item number seven, Discuss and Consider Updates on Plans, what, excuse me?
Thank you for the debate.
Okay. Item number seven, Discuss and Consider Updates on Plans for the Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Station. I have emailed Udo Stockter, and to, I know I have some of the documents. I don't certainly have all of the information they had, so I'm just requesting all of the information that he had, so I can go through that, and then go, and then start the conversations again with the, the county commissioners' board. But I know that there's a lot of information that he gathered that I don't have yet, so, and I haven't gotten enough yet from him.
I think he's on vacation right now.
He could be. I haven't gotten. Any, item number eight, Discuss and Consider, under local agreement or subdivision regulation, I don't have any updates on that. Item number nine, Discuss and Consider Insurance Requirements for Fall Harvest Festival.
Yes. Well, yes, what should they be? What, can the city provide the insurance for fall harvest? Also, I know we talked a little bit about sanitation, the porta potties, but I'm wondering if the city's going to take on sanitation with its, you know, contribution to the fall harvest, if we can just, they do take checks, maybe we just have the city pay directly to them, and then that is an easy budget line item.
Well, the only line item we have is sponsorship.
Right. But at least we can have the city pay, we can have the city write, because we can find out what the price for the porta potties is, and then the check, rather than go from habitable, it doesn't really matter one way or another.
Isn't that actually hitting a whole reason why cities have nonprofits to run the events? You can't, I think there's some reason or conflict of interest why cities always have a nonprofit.
Yeah, we're not allowed to donate.
Yeah, I don't think you're, there's a reason you don't want to writing a check.
It constitutes a donation, I think.
Yeah, we're not allowed to donate.
Oh, to the porta potty?
No, no, I mean, no.
Oh, I see, I see.
If we were to completely sponsor.
Right, I see.
An event, we would be donating, for, under, I think, under Texas law, and that's why we can't do that.
Okay. Well, it just opens it up, then anybody says, well, you donated to this, why don't you donate to mine?
That's true, yeah.
Yeah.
And which, which, you know, certainly, they would be in their rights to ask, you know, so that, yeah, we do not typically donate, our cities are not allowed to donate, but we can sponsor.
Yes.
So then, does, will TML also sponsor the insurance, will they be able to cover the insurance? Do we need to, do we need to find that out, or?
Well, well, right now, the way it exists, we're, we are insured by TML, and that would include any incident that happens during Fall Festival or other event. So, the city has adequate insurance to pay for any claim of some person's injury lawyer brings a claim arising out of the event. We're covered as a city. That does not mean, and that policy, I don't think says right now, I'm certain that it doesn't say, that we are insuring anyone else. That's, that's where the real issue comes up, Allison, and that's when several months ago, well, it seemed like just a couple, but it must have been six or eight months ago, we passed a resolution when Big Easy did something. And we had a resolution that said that they, anybody, if they're going to ask us to close the streets down, and the city becomes responsible somewhat, then we're going to ask them to provide their own insurance, and make us an additional insured, the city as additional insured. That's what the ordinance says right now. That doesn't mean the city can't change its mind and go do some other format. But if, if the city were to go back to TML and say, I want you to include the Fall Festival and habitable spaces as the sponsoring entity, to include them as an additional insured, then TML is going to probably send us an endorsement and a premium, and they're going to ask us to pay for, and we have to ask Chase, the specialist, what the cost is. But that's what the scope of the liability issue is, and right now, we're, the city's insured, but, and it has an ordinance that says, anybody that's going to do an event should get liability insurance on its own, and make us additional insured. Now, I, I don't, going back to the TML and asking them to issue an endorsement and insure habitable spaces.
Well, I think.
Is much more complicated than would be, the city can legally just say, I'll increase the line item budget to pay for the cost of, if they, if the city so chooses, they can go in and say, we'll pay for the cost of that insurance that, that habitable spaces or Easy or whoever.
We can sponsor that just as easy as we can sponsor porta potties, right?
Yes, yes.
I mean, so does, I mean, does habitable spaces need extra insurance? Because we're, I mean, we're doing a booth, we're doing a maker booth down there, but.
Well, I, I think your liability policy probably says, and, and I looked at it, and it, it does not say that they're, I don't recall, but it says that they're covering events that are off your premises.
Yeah.
Or in downtown, which means it would be good practice for you to go to that liability company, and you're already paying them a big premium, but it would be good practice, if there's no other way to do it, to go to them and say, I want you to insure, I want you to know, insurance company, that we operate this event, and there may be some liability issue, and they'll say what the cost of that is. They'll ask you questions about it, and then they would send you an endorsement that says, this is added to the policy, and they'll send you a bill for a premium.
Okay.
Now, I don't think, I'm not an insurance agent, but I don't think that that would be, would cost more than $400 or $500. But if, if the city wants to negotiate with you on what that costs, how we're going to share that liability expense, but I'm just saying for general purposes, if you wanted to, you could ask the city to, with a line item budget in there, to pay $400 to habitable spaces for the insurance coverage. Understanding that, then we don't change our policy at all, but we pay for the insurance, too, if the city commissioners agree, could pay the insurance for habitable spaces.
I mean.
And then, any, any event would.
We're trying to do the same thing.
Would do something similar?
Well, yes, if the city, I think that's a policy decision for the city commissioners. Yes, if, when we did the ordinance that said, any event, that is to just include everybody equally, equally apply the law and liability insurance to any event, and if, any event holder, if we, we could, that doesn't mean we have to do it. Like, for instance, if the city were to say, Fall Festival is a crucial, important, and we find it the best interest of the people to help the sponsorship by paying for the liability insurance, well, then that doesn't mean that the city has to go on and do that for Big Easy or anyone else, but someone might, someone might feel otherwise. It's arguable. And, you know, this is a Big Easy or the Trail Drive. If Trail Drive comes in, it's the same thing. And if, because something could happen at the Trail Drive, and that doesn't mean we need have to, if we do it for Fall Festival, we don't have to do it the same thing for Big Easy events and Fall, and whatever I just said, the other one. But, but that's the policy decision. I mean, that's where you have to make a decision as commissioners as to what's in the best interest of the city. Is there a paramount, we, we find this to be a crucial and all-important event in the, in the founding of the, and we kind of adopted it in 2015 immediately, although it was started back in 2011, wasn't it, I have it, the spaces.
It's 2012, but, yeah.
In 2012.
Well, is it a matter of getting with either Chase or Chase Patton or Sheila Bauer with, with TML IRP, and seeing what our options or best path is for this, the cost and what is normally done.
And if y'all check the carrier, see.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
And I have one more question, because it's just stuff, but, okay, if part of the festival moves into not public property, but private property, the hall, what insurance issues do we have with that, as far as the city? Now, it's the festival.
The sponsorship that you.
But it's, we're, we're doing a sponsorship.
That's a question.
Yes.
Yeah, but this is on basically pub property for the most part.
Yeah, that I have.
But now, if it moves into.
Right.
A private property, field and the building.
I think the fact that we're sponsoring.
And the whole street is part of the festival.
Would mean that we're covered. And Chase might, you know, clarify that, but, and we might ask, and that's a good question.
We should ask you.
My opinion is that they would cover us if it was on private property.
And no additional cost.
And.
Well, we're saying the whole street, right? Since we blocked the whole street, wouldn't it be all the storefronts and, I mean, anything that's open for the event?
I don't, I don't know. To me, the public, the street is, is public property, so it's, it's not like.
That's all the city's liable for.
Yeah.
Except that you mentioned sponsorships of sponsorship and.
We're sponsoring the event, because it's, it's historically for our city.
That's a good point. I will definitely, I'll, I'll talk with TML IRP and make sure that I include that, because I have normally.
Include any space having, hosting.
So I assume they want to, everybody.
In their space.
And, and, and this becomes.
Just blame lawyers.
And that would include, I guess, the Big Easy since we use the lot on the side.
What for you would be done already at home.
Well, I'm not talking about.
Blanket includes any private property owner.
That's right. I was like, the property side. Yeah, you're talking the field.
Yeah, the field.
The field next.
You're going on the list, people to sue to, that's all right.
The field next.
I know, anytime.
The field on the side.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
And then the plenty of the buildings, yeah.
Except wants to shame all of us.
Yeah, like, we used to have the headings that were down there on the other side of the museum.
Right, exactly. That's all private.
All of that is all private, yeah.
And it's like.
But I think it's.
I wouldn't bear, I mean, sure, yeah, go ahead, because it's the Fall Festival, and it's just going to use the field.
So the other issue that was brought up, you know.
It shouldn't be an issue, but.
You put it in budget as one annual event.
Yeah, I mean, and it is the whole town. It's everybody from the town getting together. It's not just like Big Easy, where it's a Big Easy event. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's all the different people. I mean, it's.
The residents and community.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that Chase and the rest of the underwriters at TML, TML, they, they make that decision. They don't even ask us how many annual events we do. I don't think they ask Marion or any other city. Those underwriters just go in and assume that every city is going to have between two and four annual festivals or events public, and so we have to figure the risk of something happening at that many events in every city, and it's calculated into the first premium.
It may not be, you should all.
Yes.
Very true.
I'm going to think that's the way it's going to be.
I want, I want to get, and get some kind of information, you know, or answers.
I'm trying to be thoughtful to answer the question.
Yeah. I mean, once we get.
We get it all worked, ironed out.
Well, we, we'll get it ironed out.
Rocking and rolling.
Yeah. All right. I'll check with them tomorrow, and I'll let, if I can get ahold of Chase and or Sheila, I'll, you know. Item number 10, discuss.
So what does this mean for, I'm sorry, I feel like I lost the.
You have. Everybody has, it's okay.
We didn't need to decide anything, we just kind of wanted to come to a conclusion about what we were asking, so.
Yeah.
We're going to talk, we'll talk to our insurance, and you guys talk to yours. I mean, yeah, and we'll see what happens, but, yeah.
Because we may cover, we will make sure that we're covered, and.
And I think really, when we start talking about private property, it really should be the city that, like, we should just say, the city, if we go to TML, I mean, that's really, because everybody needs to be covered. Like, we can't use the field, that's private, there's a lot of private property that we use.
But we do get permission, but.
Yeah.
How's that work?
But it still could be a hazard for them.
Yeah.
If something happened and somebody. That's assuming work, right?
Yeah, it ruins everything.
Yeah, right? Sewers are the worst.
Yeah, I was talking.
Honestly, even my generation, we got away with so much stuff that you can't do now, so I'm glad I lived when I did, so.
Yeah, I was talking.
Wait, you're not alive anymore? Wait a minute.
Our fingers and toes.
Happy Halloween.
Merry Toes goes.
We get away with it today, we try.
Yeah, I was talking to my insurance agent recently, and they were, he was giving me information on, you know, a nonprofit that, that got, someone that did not drink at that event, drank later, ended up.
Yeah.
And so, you see these commercials for the hammer and, you know.
Yeah, those people.
And all those, those guys, they just sue, they just blanket suit everyone down the line for a million dollars, a billion dollars each.
You still got to pay a lawyer to defend you, even if you're innocent.
Right. And so, when you see those commercials, I'm sure those guys are doing great jobs, but, you know, that's, that's what you have to consider, is that, you know, someone.
Someone's investigating job security.
If, you're, you're in the chain of events that day, and so whether or not they, you know, whether or not you did anything wrong, you're going to be in the, in the crossfire.
We have enough money to make it worthwhile, soon.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's, it's always the allegations in the petition that frame the, quite the exposure to, and, and that's what the, in our insurance company, TML, would look at, is the petition. to, and, and that's what the, our insurance company, TML, would look at, is the petition and read it and say, "Okay, I do think this arises out of something that the city was connected to, therefore, we have to defend the city." But it's, it's from the well-pleaded petition is what the insurance law says. You look to that and that's what coverage is determined by.
So, we're looking into what we need to do, if anything, for coverage on the public thoroughfare and for private property. I am...
Cut a little bit, okay?
Good job. Item number ten, discussing, consider request from Big Easy Saloon to strip the parking spaces outside of the saloon. And so, this is, I got a call from the manager at the Big Easy and she said that they're, and this is not the property owner, this is the people, the...
Operators.
The operate, that are operating the, the business out of there. I'm reaching... My eyes are so dried out, it's like looking through a dirty window. I'm reaching out to get some information to help for our project there in Kingsbury. We are renovating the Big Easy Salon during that tour there and are wanting to strike the, yeah, and are wanting to strike the parking lot for better parking for everyone. I'm needing help in getting a permit and speaking to everyone I need to, to get their approval. I would appreciate sincerely any guidance and assistance you can give me. Thank you for your time. So, there is no parking lot.
Yeah, what are they talking about?
It's a, it's a public thoroughfare. I don't know in my lifetime if there's ever been parking spaces there. I do, I understand that they had requested, you know, maybe asphalting and striping across the street, but the railroad, yeah, railroad told them, "No, that's, that's..."
The road owns quite far, right?
Yeah, actually quite far. So, what they're saying here, there, there, he says parking lot, there is no parking lot, so obviously, he's talking about the, the street. And it's a street, so I don't, I don't know if it's...
You do give them the authority, right?
I feel like we can, we can say the...
I don't know. I was talking with the manager, I said, "Well, that's not a call that I can make." That's a public thoroughfare, so that would, it, it is in the, that area is in the city of Kingsbury city limits, that part of the, of the road. So, I said, you know, they can make their request and I will take it to city council and we can consider if it's something that, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to do it.
Well, no, I mean, it could...
It's used as parking already.
Could there be like four or five assigned spaces right in front of their space and that side, that outside space? I mean, that's like, I think a lot of spaces, but I don't think there's...
Is parallel.
Yeah, I'm not interested in...
They're using it otherwise because it is a thoroughfare.
Oh, I see, I see.
I think, I think we'd have to ascertain accurately where the street is, where the city property, as soon as the storefront, not the sidewalk is part of the thoroughfare.
That's right.
And, and it ends wherever the railroad's right of way begins. And they put, whoever put the stop sign where it is, makes it look like the railroad right of way is really close to downtown Kingsbury.
On the streetwise.
I don't think it's that, I don't think it's as far as that stop sign is.
Yeah.
But the stop sign would be on your right-hand side at the corner of your street, edge of your street lane, so, but we have to ascertain what, what property actually is the street and then how much lane width do we have to leave?
And I'm not interested in...
Because everybody parks like they do and, and they managed, we managed to get by.
And parking stripes anywhere else down.
Well, they can't, I mean, they can't park in front of other people's property.
Well, that means it's, it is a...
But they can park, but they can't make stripes.
I think, I think we, our people park in front of the buildings just like they do, and I think we managed just to get around, because we're using the railroad's right of way as part of the thoroughfare.
Right, and you really can't stripe there in front of the dance hall because the, you're parking your, you're, well, you're, you're blocking that whole side with the tree. So, on that side of the tree, which is occasionally, if there's nobody parking there, it's used for thoroughfare. But if you put stripes there, then it certainly would be blocked, theoretically be blocked to thoroughfare.
I don't even truly see what stripes is gonna do for them, but whatever.
Yeah, I'm kinda curious.
I don't either. People tend to park pretty in a place that really...
We're not gonna be like, "Oh, there's now the stripes, I'm gonna stop."
It would, it would look nice and orderly.
Yeah, sure.
And, but, like I said, I don't think we have the lane width, lane width to actually designate a parking.
And who would be doing the striping, who would be maintaining? It would be the city.
And if we did it, you may have to turn it in because of the thoroughfare.
That's true, that's wrong.
Ain't going there.
Well, I mean, I don't think, you know, in any town, I don't think the businesses are maintaining the stripes in front of there.
They think that's a ruling or something.
So, it would be the city maintaining, doing, you know, paying for that and maintaining that. And again, I don't know how much cost benefit there is there. I don't know how much benefit it is to, other than, you know, aesthetics maybe.
What look like?
It's a saloon though. I know, I know. I, I certainly considered stripes on the Kingsbury Road, but that would've been off, you know, on...
Well, that's technically off.
But it's, but then you're kind of limiting people's freedom to park coming in this way or that way, you know? Cause it would have to go with the, if you're, if, you know what I'm talking about, you know, on Kingsbury Road, so the stripes would've gone this way. Well, if you're coming over the tracks, you would have to, like, or something along those lines. And so, we decided not to park, not to put any stripes there, just because it limits people's, I mean, it certainly doesn't prevent you from parking across the stripes, you know, parking, just ignoring the stripes altogether, but it, you know...
As I said, if, unless, until we can determine exactly where the railroad's right of way begins, I'd say we can't even consider striping because we don't know how much lane width we have.
We don't.
And, and I don't think parking is really a terrible issue out there. They seem to find places to park pretty well. I don't know, maybe they do have an issue I don't know about.
He, he mentions here, "Just for better parking." Doesn't say anything about safety or...
I mean, it was like candy tap spots or something, I would understand that, you know.
Sorry?
You know, designated spots in the front, that would make a lot of sense, you know?
You're complying with federal law.
Yeah.
As is, if you're not discriminating, anybody can use it.
Yeah.
Right.
I like that.
I'm telling you, when you get down to that...
Right, so...
No.
Yeah, I agree.
That's so late.
So, at this point, we're not taking any action on this, see?
Yeah.
I think that's true.
So, those things again, where people forget that Kingsbury, not a real one.
I mean, it's...
We don't mess with that kind of stuff, come on.
But it is a thoroughfare and the railroad owns quite a bit of that actual, it owns kinda half the street.
I'm really kinda curious how much it really is.
Yeah, it's...
I go down the highway...
It would be worth it to find out, actually. We should reach out to...
And where the property fence is on the other side.
I understand part of...
I'm pretty sure that fence is not on railroad property, pretty sure.
Well, I understand part of Geno's thing.
In some places, in some places.
I understand, it's pretty far, cause I understand part of Geno's thing about the one thing that he's locked in his property is the value of it, because they've got old gas tanks for that, when it was a filling station, that are like literally on 90 now, which the, the railroad actually operates, so it's like this whole nightmare that he can't even do anything about it.
Well, text that offering, the runway, but, yeah. From what I know, I mean, their person, their property and then their easement goes out even farther. So, they do have an easement, you know?
But it somehow intersects, I mean, it's weird.
Bring this up, like, we don't know where...
Like, he couldn't even pull those out if he wanted to, apparently, so.
Yeah. They're under the road?
They're kind of somewhat under 90, if we understand, but it's also intersection of the railroad's, it's weird. Ask him about it.
Yeah.
His actual property, like, you think that that concrete out front is his, that's about it. Down the side of his building?
Now, why?
Yeah.
Right.
Not where you can pull up, where you think you're off the road, I guess. I don't know.
Both sides are, on one side, the maker and the other thing is, and yes, the tanks out front, and yes, they're under highway right of way.
Under right of way.
Right of way, okay.
Yeah.
And there's questions there because the lines have moved so many times and what they would have, what did they do, look it over here, look it over there.
All right, so, you know, I don't think we're voting on anything here. I think it's just a point for, to discuss and I, at this point, it does not seem that we are...
I actually think surely, if you're willing to take it on, if there's some way we can find out what the railroad does own, because, you know, if we do grow, like, you know, who knows, we might have to address this again and what, what is the thoroughfare? Do we need to make it into a one-way street eventually? I mean, it'd be worth it to know.
Find out.
You could ask the surveyor to take the 1875 plat and mark it. That's, that's what they'd run off from, is the 1875.
They may, they may have changed it somewhere along the line.
Well, they might have, but if they changed it, they had to go change it on the plat and what...
When I had my property surveyed, it came off the railroad. Yeah, they, they said based on the railroad.
Yeah, my property as well, when I had surveyed, it was, and that's why they said, "Oh, it changed a little bit," because they gotta, they moved the rails.
Okay.
So, that, we're doing GPS surveys now, more so than...
Yeah. All right, so I will, I will see if I can find out, probably Raquel, with the UP on the railroad easement, right of way, easement, with those, with those two.
Yeah, but that'll probably, we'll probably need that when we go into...
Because easement, surely we could pay them to easement.
So, thank you, thank you that they asked.
Yeah.
And this nice story is on to them. We can't give you an answer. You put paint out there, we don't have...
Their right of way.
Yeah, it's like, go for it.
We don't have enforcement, which we don't have.
Yeah.
You put yourself in a very precarious position by...
I'm not gonna stop.
Well, it's like, yeah, who's...
A lot of, yeah, a lot of finding and thinking and discussing with other people, including their property owner, which I understand they had problems with because of what they're doing, but that's only gossip.
All right, item number 11. At this point, we're gonna recess our regular commission meeting and enter into executive session, so we have to ask, either we can...
Yeah, you might try to start real quick, you know, closing, but my team.
Shane, I have a real quick question.
Okay.
This is a pre-dress.
How do you get these things open to plug in your computer?
Uh, that should just pop out.
It should, okay.
The screw's very...
I'm trying to use my...
The screw's very out of it, so. I think they just...
I have those at my house and...
Yeah, you're supposed to be able to use a key.
Yeah, well, and then it will screw, and it does have a screw that you can put on.
Big team, like, big team looks strong with the kids, but...
So, are those from the grant? Is that the, the guys brought that?
I do, they have a...
It's a, it's almost a...
Yeah, so this one is the, if it needs to plug in right now, I, I have a, I have a power stand.
One greater, we probably...
Well, now, it's a power strip here and I could plug, response to the RFP, I could move this computer.
Oh, I need to, um, executive session going off there. Thank you. So, we're back from executive session. One more agenda item, here we go.
All right, at this point, we'll reconvene our regular commission meeting. Item number 14, discussing, consider possible real estate acquisition. At this point, we have determined to go forward with...
A real estate acquisition for the city of Kingsbury?
Yeah. I know that I have the right wording. Go, go forward with, with the next steps on a possible real estate acquisition. All right, and at this point, we shall adjourn.
Thank you.
And so, we just wanted to, you back so that we can just tell you, and thank you, and goodbye.